Good evening, the time is seven o'clock and we begin tonight with a public hearing on our program year two thousand twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Budget, uh, which will be presented by Mr. Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty, if you'd like to come on up to the podium, you know, I know you know the drill, name, name and address for the, for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Borough Council. Uh, my name is Chris Rafferty, um, the Director of Community Development for the Community Development Authority of Cumberland County. Um, our address is one fourteen North Hannover Street. Um, tonight, what we, we have two things. One, a public hearing to give the public a chance to comment on proposed use of CBG funds that the borough receives from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The entitlement amount for program year two thousand twenty-two is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. There's a number of activities that we propose to fund. Um, to get to this point, we held a needs assessment meeting back in June to get public comment, what the needs are in the community. Also, we advertised another ad, advertised another, um, notice in the paper outlining all the programs and activities that the borough proposes to fund with the block grant program. At this point, we're hoping to get a final public hearing before it's submitted to HUD. And again, we're gauging what the, um, public's comments are concerned regarding our program. So we want to open up to the public to see if they have any comments.
Are there, are there any comments here in Borough Hall? Questions, comments? I see none. Do we have anybody Zoom? Looks like no comment.
Okay, so later on in the agenda, the OB has to take a motion to approve this mission of the annual action plan to the US Department of Housing and Development. Once they receive it, they have forty-five days to review it. And after they review it and approve it, then they, they'll send a grant agreement to the borough for execution. At that time, we also ask for a agreement between the borough and the government authority to implement a program. Are there any other questions or comments?
Does Council have any questions or comments? No? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this hearing is adjourned. And we're going to roll right into our regular meeting of council, um, so called order the, the regular meeting of council August, um, eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty-two. I will begin with the moment of silence. Um, tonight, I'm going to touch on a, on a bit of a personal note, um, and, and dovetail it into uh, a new, um, service that's being provided by the, the county and something that, that soon will be provided by the borough. Uh, tonight's actually the eighteenth anniversary of, uh, the, the suicide of, of my, my, my boss, um, right out of, right out of law school. I, uh, was hired by a firm and, uh, spent, uh, just shy of a year with that firm. Uh, and the, the partner, uh, one day I was informed after custody hearing, uh, coming back to the office that he had decided to take his life. Um, it's, it's something that I, you know, think of very often. He left behind a widow, uh, a beloved son and stepdaughter. Uh, looking back on that, um, and I still have the same paralegal I had back then, um, and we, we talk about it frequently, uh, in hindsight, we saw signs. Uh, we, we could explain some of it away, away because, uh, the server went down in the firm and he was stressed out. Um, the evening before, uh, on, on August tenth, um, he came into my office while I was working late at night and asked me if I was going to be okay to take, take care of things on, on my own. Um, obviously in hindsight, seems easy to see those signs. We do have a nine eighty-eight number now that folks can call when they're in crisis. Uh, we will soon have a co-responder for mental health issues, uh, that will, that will support our, our law enforcement and emergency services here in the borough. Uh, but, but more important than that is that we all, you know, reach out to each other, um, be there for each other, try to recognize those signs when they, when they appear and, and be compassionate for each other. Um, so if we could all just, uh, rise, take a moment of silence, um, to think about the families and, and, uh, of those who have, who have suffered through those incidents. Thank you. Now please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, sorry to bring everybody down right at the beginning of the meeting, but we'll, uh, move on. Madam Secretary of the Roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry, Ms. Perry. Mayor Schultz?
Here.
And Mr. Stube?
Here.
Uh, first, not only agenda, we'll, we'll need a, a motion, uh, to permit, uh, Counselor Hicks to attend by video conference. Do we have such a motion? So moved. Motion by Counselor Stube, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. Welcome, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be here.
Okay, first, uh, presentation with, uh, Smith Elliott Kearns, uh, on our audit presentation for year ending December, uh, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Stalford, a member of the firm with Smith Elliott Kearns and Company. We're located at nineteen Brookwood Avenue. And I'm here tonight to go through the two thousand twenty-one Annual Comprehensive Financial Reporter, your ACFR. Uh, that, that terminology changed there, uh, but it's now called the ACFR. So I'm going to go through, uh, the results stemming from the audit and overall, I think you'll be very pleased with the results of the audit this year. Uh, in summary, uh, this year, again, we're going to go through the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Uh, that includes your independent auditors report, our management letter and our communications with those charged with governance. So I've tried to take over a hundred and fifty pages and condense it down into a brief ten to fifteen minute presentation for you here this evening. So before diving into the details, just to provide a high level summary of the results, I think you'll be very pleased with the results of the audit this year. First and foremost, we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue on the financial statements, and I'll go through those details on the next slide. Also happy to report that we didn't have any findings related to our audits. Those are internal control matters or compliance matters. I'm happy to report that there were no such issues. I know the next bullet point is very long. Um, I probably should have worded a little bit differently, but overall, there was a positive change in fund balance or net position in most funds. Uh, the only two where the expenses did exceed the revenues were your highway aid and your solid waste funds. The other funds all had a positive change in fund balance or net position. And once again, this year, we did perform what's known as a single audit. In any given year in which your total federal expenditures exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have to test certain federal programs associated with that, and that's called a single audit, and that was performed again this year. On the next page are just additional details related to the independent auditors report. And once again, this year, we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue on the financial statements. But essentially that means that the financial statements are materially correct and can be relied upon. Uh, this is not an opinion on internal controls, nor is it an opinion or results of a fraud investigation. I know sometimes people hear the word audit, and I know I say this every year, they think we look at every transaction, although it may feel like it to Richard, uh, we do not look at every transaction. We perform sampling to ultimately issue our opinion that the financial statements are materially correct. Also included are management's discussion analysis. Uh, this is a narrative comparative analysis included in the financial statements to elaborate on the trends over the several years. On the next page, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but it turns your attention now to the general fund. Uh, the first column is the two thousand twenty actual results compared to two thousand twenty-one actual results, and it also compares the actual results to the final budget. So starting with the revenues, about a third of the way down the page, you can see about eight percent higher than the previous year and also a little bit higher than what was budgeted as well. You can see the two large items that increased there. The top item are your taxes, and that is all taxes for the borough, but the biggest increases were in your earned income taxes and your realty transfer taxes for two thousand twenty-one. Also increasing were the intergovernmental revenues. Uh, they were six, higher than the previous year and also higher than budget. Obviously with ARPA funding coming in and spending of those funds, uh, that were not there or were not spent in two thousand twenty as well. Moving down to the expenditure side of things, uh, you can see very comparable to the previous years as far as the total expenditures were concerned and also considerably less than budget. Uh, part of that reason is for admin reimbursements that are not budgeted for within the general fund as well as vacant positions and reduction of operating supplies and reduction in overtime, as well as budgeting conservatively with costs related to COVID. So literally the bottom line, uh, for two thousand twenty-one, if you take the revenues less the expenditures, had a surplus of almost one point three million dollars compared to a budgeted deficit of about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So a positive variance there, about one point nine million dollars. So a very positive note there for the general fund for two thousand twenty-one. On the next page, I'm just going to turn your attention now to the fund balance. Focusing primarily on the general fund, again, your non-spendable fund balances are those that, well, just what it sounds like, those are called prepaid inventories, uh, long-term receivable, so not available to be spent. The next category are restricted fund balances that are restricted by outside entities, and that has about thirty thousand dollars as of December thirty-first. Moving to the next category is committed fund balance of just under six hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year. Five hundred thousand of that is designated or committed for future other post-employment benefits, while the other ninety-eight thousand is for future recreation. The next category are designated are what's called assigned fund balance, internally assigned by Borough Council. Uh, that break down about nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is for the budget deficit for next year, so two thousand twenty-two. Uh, if you have a budget deficit, you're basically setting that aside in the current year. You also have four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars assigned for the TIF guarantee, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars assigned for future benefits and about forty-three thousand dollars for the comp plan. So that makes up the total assigned fund balance. And then the last category is the unassigned fund balance and a very healthy about eight point four million dollars. And again, if you look at that as a percentage of your operating expenditures, about eighty-seven percent. So again, very healthy fund balance as far as the unassigned fund balance is concerned in the general fund. The other fund balances that are included here are the other governmental funds, your capital projects, highway aid and asset forfeiture. All are considered restricted for those purposes, uh, within those funds. On the next page, it just turns your attention now to the utility side of things. I know again, there's a lot of numbers here. I'm just going to focus literally on the bottom line here, that change in net position where it takes the revenues less the expenses. And you can see a positive change in most of those funds with the exception being the solid waste fund. And the biggest reason for that was an increase in the operating revenues due to the multi-year rate structure. That's ultimately set aside monies for capital improvement plans in the future. So anticipated increases there within that position of each of those funds. On the next page, I'll just turn your attention now briefly to the pension plans. I will again highlight this is as of December thirty-first, but both the non-uniform and the police pension plans were, uh, more than one hundred percent funded as of the end of the year. So again, a very positive note. Could look a little different now, obviously with the market conditions during two thousand twenty-two. But again, as of December thirty-first, a very positive note, uh, to be fully funded in each of those plans. On the next page, it just looks at your debt margin over the last ten years with an incremental, uh, point in time there with two thousand and sixteen. Uh, you can see the total amount of debt applicable to the debt limit as a percent, very comparable from two thousand twelve to two thousand and sixteen. Obviously a different picture in two thousand twenty-one with the additional debt, uh, that was issued during the current year. So you can see about sixty-nine percent of that total debt limit. Uh, is where you're at as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. On the next page, it just turns your attention now to the federal expenditures. I alluded to the single audit previously. This year, the total federal expenditures were just under three million dollars. Uh, that's almost double what it was in the previous year. Again, because of the Tiger Grant as well as the, uh, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and those are the two programs that we actually tested as part of the single audit. Despite the title being a single audit, we did look at two programs as part of that federal program review. And again, happy to report that we didn't have any findings related to compliance over either one of those grants. So again, a very positive note. Next is the management letter. Uh, the purpose of this letter first and foremost is to go over any new standards and how they're impact your financial statements in the future. The details of all the Gatsby standards are included there within that letter. I won't bore you with those details here tonight, uh, but those details are in that letter. And then the rest of that letter and most of the rest of my presentation here is just some graphical analysis to see trends over time. So we'll just dive into that on the next page. It's just a cash and investment comparison. I know the outlier here, when you look at the general fund, oh my goodness, why, why is there such a large increase in cash there? And based on any time you issue debt, you have the unspent debt proceeds, those funds are sitting within the general fund, but they're ultimately owed to the other funds and the other funds are accounted for that debt. So that amounts to about twenty million dollars that are owed to other funds for holding up that debt proceeds. So without that, the cash balance would be very comparable to what it was in previous years within the general fund. And as you look at amongst each of the other funds, very comparable as far as the cash and investment balance is concerned. On the next page, it's just a revenue comparison over the past five years. Uh, again, you can see the largest fluctuations within the taxes categories we previously talked about. Once again, that is all taxes for the borough. So real estate, fire, realty transfer, earned income tax, LST as well as admission tax are included there. And you can see the slight increase for two thousand twenty-one. The other fluctuation I'll just highlight is kind of in the middle of the page or intergovernmental revenue. Once again, because of the grant revenue with the Tiger Grant as well as the coronavirus relief funds, uh, you see the increase there in the intergovernmental revenue. On the next page, it just turns your attention, similar graph, but looking at the expense side of things. Again, fairly comparable. I think the largest fluctuations that you'll see are within your public safety, uh, due to additional amount of spending in the capital projects funds for the codes as well as the debt service due to having the refinancing. That's why you're seeing a large increase there within your debt service. But your annual debt service was very comparable to the previous year. And then the final graph that we have is just the change in fund balance or net position. So I know each of these were previously on other slides, but in graphical format. Again, here's where you can see each of the individual major funds that we have included here had a positive change in fund balance or net position. So again, a positive note uh, within the current year to have the positive increase in your fund balance or net position. The other letter related to our audit is what's known as the communication with those charged with governance. Had there been any significant issues in completing the audit or disagreements with management on accounting principles, we'd have to report on those here in this letter. I'm happy to report there were no such issues or disagreements, so that's why we just consider it to be our standard communications. So in summary, once again, I think a very positive note coming from the audit this year, we were able to issue the unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue on the financial statements. No findings to report on, both from the financial statement audit as well as the single audit where we looked at those federal programs and had a positive change in fund balance this year. And again, most of the funds with the exception being the highway aid and the solid waste funds. And once again, the single audit was performed and we looked at the Tiger Program, uh, as well as the coronavirus state relief funds. I know that was a lot of information. I hope somewhat fairly quickly, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions either related to the presentation or from the audit documents themselves.
Are there any questions for Council? Mr. Hicks, any question?
Uh, not for me, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I, before you step away, not that I'm going to ask you to answer anything, but I think it's important to note that we have a very healthy general fund. We had that surplus. Um, I don't want anybody to think that that's, that's likely to repeat itself. A lot of that was, uh, were, were one-time issues, um, although that, sort of a, a, an ahistoric, uh, increase in, in the earned income tax revenue, uh, which I think probably surprised everybody here and we're not, not entirely sure what that, that, that that may continue. Um, so, uh, going forward in budget years, note we have a structural deficit that we're always struggling with in, in boroughs like this, that, uh, we, we need to be cautious in our approach to budgeting.
Certainly. And I think when it comes to budgeting with earned income taxes, with the time the twenty-one budget was prepared, we were just coming out of COVID and everybody was saying budget conservatively, we don't know what this is going to look like in the future. And I've seen it with a lot of entities. There's a large variance there between the actual results and because it just didn't, didn't come to fruition. But again, I think budget conservatively and then you're seeing the offset to that by, by it not being the case.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Uh, we appreciate doing a service for the borough. Uh, if you have any questions after tonight, please go for it, either contact me directly or filter loose through Richard. We'd be happy to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next is an opportunity for citizens, visitors to be heard. We did not have anybody scheduled beforehand, but this is your opportunity if you're joining us here tonight. Um, we're, we're, uh, public by Zoom to provide any, any public comment. Is there any such public comment here tonight? Yes, sir. You'll need to come up to the podium, please, um, and name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Evans, one five seven B Street, uh, is my address. Uh, just a couple of issues I just wanted to address. I've reached out to the borough, uh, on multiple occasions. Um, over in the area, we have the whole connector between Spring Road and up to College Street that's being done. Um, I've emailed the borough, I've e, on a couple of issues. Um, one back in the spring, because there was shoddy sidewalks and stuff like that that were out of alignment, that were crumbling from over the winter. Um, so just trying to get an update on where that's at. We're like three or four months, you know, for folks that don't know what's going to happen if it doesn't get fixed this winter. Is it next spring? Um, so trying to get an update on that. Um, I also emailed about a health and safety issue within the neighborhood. Um, there seems to be a roach infestation, potentially a rat or mice infestation to a lesser extent. And that's just trop, talking not just in my block, but all the way up to where Tarn Rubber used to be, where the apartments and stuff are. Um, I've been roach hunting for the past couple of months trying to kill them, but there's large nests. I did forward some pictures uh, to the borough manager and the borough engineer and others to, uh, you know, to give an idea that I'm not just throwing this out here. Um, I imagine when they dug stuff up, there was probably nests in the old water drainage system. That's what I would assume. Um, and they probably filtered out, but the reason that I'm raising issue is a lot of kids playing in the neighborhood, but as the weather gets colder and some people that I've talked to, not just on my block, but up and down, the roaches are getting into residents. And, uh, one fifty-eight B Street, I think is the address. There's a blue house across the street that's just been condemned. So there's a lot of places that if this infestation takes hold, you know, that's a lot of stuff in the residence to deal with. Then you get infestation and obviously they carry disease and, and other things. So, um, I'm not sure if it can be addressed, if something can be sprayed. I mean, I know you not necessarily can mitigate it maybe one hundred percent, but the more this goes on, the longer the construction goes on, it's going to filter out and become an issue, a, a larger issue than I think what it, it already is. Um, so I'm just trying to get some answers, you know, hey, i- if, if the resources aren't there or what have you, then that's fine, let folks know, but, but, uh, but not knowing, you know, how to resolve it or if we can come to you. You know, the silence is not good, in my opinion. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think I covered it. I, I, I mean, I could go on here for probably twenty minutes. I'm just raising some of those issues just to get some responses. Um, also on the twenty-sixth of July, I put in a right to no request I still haven't received. And that's the one, I think there's a lot of other folks here about the trash and recycling contract. Um, but I still have, and I think it's supposed to be five business days are supposed to be a response to say acknowledgement. I still haven't received anything on, on that. So just trying to see, um, if I can get some answers on some things that I've reached out. I know everyone's busy, but just that, hey, I'm busy, we're working it would be, would have been great, but, you know, um, it's already a couple of weeks. Um, and it always seems that I have to come here to try to get a response. Um, and I won't, I think other people probably will talk about it, but it's also the whole trash and recycling contract. I think, um, I understand the whole inflationary issues and the costing of a lot of things, but just talking and not just on my block, but around the borough, I've been talking to people, it's going to have a profound effect. The most of the regional municipalities are half the cost and for a better service. Now, I know the contracts may have been a year or two prior bid, but there's got to be something to better, get a better bid on the contract that's already in. Maybe, you know, I know there's all the legalities of everything once it's signed and all that, but um, there's a lot of people who are on fixed incomes, um, that, yeah, a, and they maybe put trash out because they don't generate enough trash um, to, you know, put out maybe once a month. But now they're paying for something that, that they, you know, wouldn't normally pay for with the old system. So I'm sure other people have some inputs and I won't take up much more of your time, but that's, you know, and I'm here. I, I, I mean, I try to get feedback from the neighborhood. I know a lot of people talk through Facebook and things like that, but a lot of people don't want to come in front of the borough, but that's why I'm trying to relay. I talk to folks that walk down the street and there's a lot of issues that I think, you know, get out and talk to people and you'll find out there's a lot more things, you know, I'm happy, streetscape is nice, but these things affect people's everyday lives. So I just wanted to address that, you know, not just to be a complainer. I, you know, I can offer some solutions, help, whatever. But just wanted to raise that to your guys' attention and thank you for your time. And if there's any questions for me, I'll wait here for a second.
I just wanted to, uh, what was your address again?
One five seven B Street.
B Street, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, I do have one other thing before I walk away from the mic, but I, I would like to talk to online. I'd like to talk to the chief for police. There's an issue I'd like, but I think it's better offline that I talk to him about that.
Sure, yeah. And I'm sure, you know, the borough manager heard everything, so, so the responses on this first couple of issues, I'm sure you'll, you'll be hearing, you'll be hearing soon. Obviously, we can't answer those questions for you right here, um, to, tonight, uh, but, but we'll make sure you get a response. On the right to know, obviously, there, there, there's a law that requires a certain timeframe. I don't know if the, the thirty-day extension was invoked perhaps to get, uh, get an opinion from the solicitor or something like that. So it's not necessarily five, five business days. So, but, but, um, I don't think we've ever had an issue where we violated that, that the time period.
And I'm not trying to imply that. I just say that what I read on the actual document is at least acknowledgement, hey, we received it.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any, any other comment here tonight? Any, go ahead, sir.
Hey, my name is Heber Shear. I'm at one forty-three B Street. I have the same problems he does. I'm on fixed income and his trash is basically a hundred and twenty percent increase for me. We put trash out once every three weeks. And the way it's going to go now, it's just, I mean, it's, it's a hundred and ten percent increase for somebody that's on fixed income. Out of the ten people on our end of the block, five of us don't put a bag out every week. One of us doesn't use it at all and another guy four or five weeks, but we've got to pay three hundred bucks. It's, I mean, the bag system worked better for us. This bulk, everybody paying the same price is not fair. It's not fair to us. Low-income people, fixed-income people, people that only put a bag out a month. Uh, I don't know what you can do about it, but it's, it's just not fair. And like I said, five out of ten on our block. So I guarantee you, if you go to other blocks, you're going to find the same thing. There's going to be people that are not putting trash out every week. For this place to work, they have to put a bag out every week. I can't do it. I mean, unless I go pick up trash in the neighborhood, that's the only way I'm going to fill a bag up. So that's my main concern. We have concerns about the Tiger Project, but I think, I mean, this gentleman has a wall that hasn't been fixed, that they said they were going to fix. Our sidewalks haven't been fixed. Haven't even seen anyone look at them yet. And the placement of the no parking sign on B Street up the upper end, it's blocked by trees now. I mean, you planted a tree in front of the sign. The tree's not growing yet, but in the next couple of years, the sign's going to be completely blocked out. Plus the homeowner on West Street has these trees growing out over the sidewalk and over, so the sign can't be seen, so there's still people parking up there. I saw a close call the other day, guy was parked there, so you have to swing out around, and if there's somebody coming this way, it's like head-on. Somebody's going to get hurt there. That's my concerns.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment here tonight?
I just want to know where they're coming to fix my wall, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get some follow-up for you. Uh, make sure, do we have, do we know who all these, these folks are? Okay, all right.
Yes, actually, there was a foot tour, I believe. Uh, Mark, are you on this evening by Zoom?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, uh, for clarity purposes, I knew that there was a foot tour of, uh, the repairs that need need that are required for the sidewalk, and I believe you're aware of the wall, correct?
Uh, that, that's correct. Um, the contract has been notified. It's on the punch list. Uh, it's something that needs to be rectified between, um, the contractor and property owner before we close the contract act. It's something that needs to be rectified between the contractor and the property owner before we close the contract out.
Correct, and that contract is not due to get closed out until everything on that punch list is complete, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any comment by Zoom? Anyone? Okay, all right, thank you. We will move on then to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in the current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. Is there any such item requested by council or the public? Okay, seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Moved by, motion by Deputy Mayor Landis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stube. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed indicate by saying that motion passes. So everything, if you're, if you have the agendas in front of you, everything on this first few white pages has been approved. Onto the regular agenda, there are no table to continued or recurring items. There's no report under the mayor's report. Move on to budget and finance. Counsel Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening with two components. I move that Borough Council adopt the resolution taking the following actions. First, authorizing additional supplemental budget appropriations to those funds and apartments outlined in said resolution. And second, amending the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six CIP to add projects previously excluded and for two thousand twenty-one projects not completed and carried over to two thousand twenty-two.
We have a motion for additional supplemental budget appropriations and amendment of the capital improvement plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Stube. Mr. Ramsey, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight. I'll make a motion that Borough Council may enact an ordinance approving an agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of Cumberland County and the Borough of Carlisle to include, but not to be limited to the continuance of the leasing of office space, parking and basic services in Borough Hall. The agreement shall be retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion by Counsel Ramsey to approve an ordinance amending, or I'm sorry, approving an agreement between the Redevelopment Authority and the Borough of Carlisle. Is there a second? Counsel Perry is out tonight, so we'll need somebody else to pick this one up. Second by Counsel Mellon. This is a roll call. Madam Secretary, please roll.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Motion, ordinance pass.
That is accurate.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Landis, ERCP.
I have one motion this evening. I make the motion that Borough Council enact an ordinance reaffirming the establishment of the Carlisle Climate Action Committee and the Carlisle Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
We've mentioned the proven ordinance reaffirming the establishment of the Climate Action Committee and the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mellon. It's also an ordinance, requires a roll call. Madam Secretary, roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
That completes my report.
Move on to Parks and Recreation. Counsel Mellon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council authorize the notice of intent to award the construction contract for lots A and D of the Fairground Avenue Linear Park as submitted by Lancard Inc. in the amount of seventy-five, I'm sorry, seven hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars contingent upon borough solicitor approval.
Motion by Counsel Mellon to approve and authorize the notice of intent to award the construction contract for lots A and D at Fairground Avenue Linear Park. Is there a second? Oh, that's my, I'm sorry, I'll second that motion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
Really quick, I didn't mean it before the vote, but do we have a timeline on that by any chance? Because I have skaters that ask me continually.
Yeah, well, we have to meet, yeah, with Lancard, but our DCN, our grant will run out June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So in all of our bidding documents, we've said that we anticipate a completion of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Who knows what may happen between then and now, but that's what we're anticipating.
Great, it's something, thank you.
Sure, we would have gotten that question anyways. Thank you, thank you. Public Safety, I, I move that council ratify a special events application submission by Hope Station for Memorial Park. And it shall include the closure of West Penn Street at the intersections of North Pitt and Northwest Streets from eight AM to five PM on Saturday, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. This event will highlight minority-owned businesses, food vendors and children's activities. I would add also, there will be free haircuts and back-to-school backpack giveaways and supplies given away to young children heading back to school. The applicant will be responsible for one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs incurred by the Borough of Carlisle. And this approval is retroactive to July twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks. Call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, motion passes. I should also note that on August twentieth, it begins at eleven o'clock and goes till five PM. Public Works, Counsel Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I move that Borough Council authorize the execution of a streamside forest buffer establishment and maintenance agreement and a lawn and meadow conversion agreement with the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay for the Carlisle Regional Wastewater Tribune Plant Property, subject to the borough solicitor's review and approval.
Motion by Counsel Stube to authorize the execution of a streamside forest buffer establishment and maintenance agreement and a lawn to meadow conversion agreement with the Alliance from Chesapeake Bay. Is there a second? This is another one more. Counsel Perry is missing.
Second.
Second by Counsel Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council authorize the reduction in the amount of financial security posted by Builder Services Group Incorporated for the Phase One Land Development Plan for Northside Village on Lot Four of the former IAC site in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty dollars.
Motion by Counsel Ramsey to authorize the reduction of the financial security posted by Builder Services Group Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And finally, I move that Borough Council approve the purchase of the following equipment as listed in Table One in the agenda for Public Works Field Operations through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Counsel Stube makes a motion to approve the purchase of equipment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Sorry, sorry there. Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Report for this evening.
Move on to Sustainable Economic and Community Planning. Counsel Hicks, are you, I know it's sometimes challenging by Zoom. Do you want to take this one or pass off?
Connectivity is good for now. Appreciate it. I'll go ahead and take it. Appreciate it. But yeah, I have two items for tonight. First item, I move that council approve the annual action plan and community development lot grant program budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents. We had a public meeting right before this council meeting that this references to.
There is a motion by Counsel Hicks to approve the annual action plan and community development block grant program budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and to authorize me to execute all associated documents. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Landis. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And the last item tonight is I move that council grant a waiver of the requirements of Chapter two twenty-six to approve the amended final subdivision and land development plan at twenty eighty-five Rittner Highway for Carlisle Construction Materials Incorporated as per Section two twenty-six dash fourteen of the borough's subdivision and land development ordinance.
Motion by Counsel Hicks to grant a waiver of the requirements of Chapter two twenty-six to approve an amended final subdivision and land development plan at twelve eighty-five Rittner Highway. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. Call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And that concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Hicks. On the new business, this is the second bite of the apple for those here with us tonight. If there's any additional public comment, this is your opportunity. And do we have anybody by Zoom who wishes to chime in? Okay, reports from council members and staff. Mr. Hicks, I'll start with you, so don't forget you out there in Zoom land.
I always appreciate that. Actually, I don't, I don't have anything for council tonight, but look forward to seeing you all soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Mellon?
I have nothing at this.
Counsel Stube?
I have nothing further this evening. Thank you, Counsel Ramsey.
I'm going to break the streak. Just to be super quick, I know it's not always the most exciting topic, but I wanted to give a shout out to Richard and all of staff for the audit. I think year after year, we kind of glaze over how good the findings are because we're just numb to it because you all do such a great job. But, you know, the pension funding that you all do and the smart budgeting, I think, puts our borough in a really good spot. As the mayor mentioned, we're, we're going to hit tough times eventually, but I think each year when we get those reports back, it's always a good thing. So, good job, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I'll just note that the back-to-school event that we approved the special event application for earlier, though that application was by Hope Station, it's also nearly put together by a number of very dedicated residents here, here in the borough. And because I didn't get their approval, to give them credit, they'll get their credit, I suppose, on August twentieth. But I encourage everybody to go out and attend, attend that event. Counsel or Deputy Mayor Landis, do you have anything for us this evening?
My only other thing was just to remind everyone that, you know, with school starting, to watch out for small folks navigating our streets outside of vehicles. So we want to be a multimodal community, so, you know, especially taking notice of that. So anyone that's actually paying attention at this point still on our meeting, maybe spread the word to remind because it starts August twenty-second.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Manager Armstrong, do you have anything from staff this evening?
No, sir. Other than to report, we no sooner conclude the audit, which is a laborious process, actually starts in about January timeframe and just concludes now. We've already ramped up development of the two thousand twenty-three budget review. So Richard and I have been meeting with the budget managers and Owen with the budget managers. And we go line by line through their budget and the requests. And they always put a lot of thought into it. And I just applaud them for the work that they present. And so it's just the first pass of the budget before council receives it October, November timeframe.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the update. And seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.